Do you mean? It's Tuesday, November 26, 2013, and this is a meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. We're working off the agenda that's at our places. They have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12, 2013 regular meeting.
So moved.
By Mark. Seconded by Lisa. Any changes?
One change on item 6.17. We still have the boys' swimming coach, S.T.B.A., and we approve Heather Crowley. Six point one seven. Yeah. Six point one seven in the minutes?
Oh, okay. I thought you said six point one seven. Okay, the change is?
The woman's name is Heather Crowley. C.R.O.W.L.E.Y.
And I have one changed. It's a second change of the minutes. Last sentence of the third paragraph, middle of the page. President Burns noted that under the FAQ section on the Engage Here website, there's a link which that shows what data points are currently being collected. Just to clarify that, it was a link that shows I would change after data points to say will that data points will be provided to In Bloom by S.E.D. That was what I was highlighting. Anyone else have any changes to the minutes? All those in favor of these minutes as amended? That motion passes. It's unanimous. Okay, we now come to our public comment section of the meeting. Any members of the public want to comment? Any members of the meeting? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on now to reports and discussion. Our first item is Board of Education obligations under New York law Section 1125. Joe, do you want to?
Sure. For for those new to the board, this is a an opportunity just to get it on the record that the board has been apprised of their obligation. There's a there's a fairly long document in in your in your packets that was the notes of a presentation that was delivered to our staff back in, I think, 2005. But what has remained to to board members is really on the bottom of the first page and and on the second spilling a little bit over to the third page. And look at the bottom of the first page. It addresses the responsibilities of various school personnel. Unlike many laws or regulations, this also includes school board members as so-called mandated reporters, which is why I bring it to your attention. Most of most of these kinds of laws are specific to members of the school, staff, teachers, guidance councils, et cetera, et cetera. But this particular section of education law also includes school board members. So we just want to make sure you know you have an obligation under the law, and it is specifically an obligation regarding the reporting of abuse in the educational setting by an employee or by a volunteer. And this section lists ways with lists things that you're required to do if you become aware of any such allegations of abuse in in the educational setting and penalties for failure to comply. So just again, this is just to bring it to your attention, not to give you a presentation on it or try to explain the five points of the law. If you have any questions about that, you know, please feel free to let me know, and I can get clarification from our legal counsel should you need to to have that. But I think it's fairly fairly self-explanatory. And again, just if you hear if you were to hear something about that in your work in the community as board members, you would be required under the law to to report it per what's in this in the section of the of the presentation. So that's just want to make sure we let you know what your obligation is.
Any questions like that? Okay, thank you, Joe. We'll move on now to potential programs and services as part of our budgeting calendar. Looking forward to the budget as we develop the budget.
Sure. As as we did last year, and I think perhaps the year before, we we provided the board upon request with with a several pages worth of potential programs and services. I would underscore at this point the word potential. These are things that we have had discussions of, but some of them we've had discussions for a number of years. Others, they've are more recently been raised by by members of our administrative staff. I would I would hasten to to let you know that these are not these are all ballpark numbers. They're approximate costs for these various potential programs and services should the board, as we work our way through the budget process, deem deem it appropriate to include one or more of these things in the budget for the 2014-15 school year, which we will start in earnest to develop after the after the first of the year. But last year, the was was requested that we do this earlier in the process. So board members had an idea to digest some of these things, to ask questions over the course of the next couple of months. And we certainly know that a number of these so number of these things we've talked about at board meetings, other things we haven't. Many of them need to be fleshed out. They need to have the if the board is going to want us to to include them in the budget, we're going to have to fine tune the costs. So all these things are placeholders, and typically, these are things we would probably be looking at over a period of years, not necessarily all of these items in in a single budget year. Just especially for those of you who who are new to our process, that's kind of the context for for putting these on your at your places this evening to tell you know what our administrators are thinking of should the budget discussions indicate that that there is some headroom for one or more of these things. So typically, what happens a little later in the process is the board asks the administrative team and me to start prioritizing those things, and that's where we start to get a better idea as to what things might be at the top of the list to be considered for the budget and what things and everything can't be a number one priority. So some things are going to fall towards the towards the bottom of the list. But that's part of the process that we'll be engaging in over the course of the next the next couple of months. I would remind you also that the building principals will will be at our meeting on December 10. So there would be an opportunity, for example, for questions if you, you know, I mean, we're not going to spend that whole portion of that meeting on the 10th going through this line by line, but there's something on here that you have a question about, that'd be an opportunity to raise it. You could always raise it with me, and I can put that in our in our process of discussing this over the next several months. Just again, to for the for people who may be watching this taped version of this, there are there are lists that are specific to each one of our three school buildings, high school, middle school, elementary school, a list under the heading of special education, and a list under larger heading of district, which we tend to put things under that heading where they may cut across multiple multiple school buildings. There's also a list under curriculum and a list under facilities, which are our, you know, our major headings of expenditures in our budget. So I guess that's, you know, that's a reasonably brief overview of this thing without clicking through these one item at a time. And if you have questions, I'll do my best or stay tuned. There's a few months to to have those conversations as well.
What's the process in terms of developing more specificity for this list over the course of the next few weeks before we start discussing?
Yeah, I mean, what we what we do, we as an administrative team, is we keep this as a running item on our typically weekly meetings. And, you know, we'll we'll open the floor at our administrative meetings towards any changes that people or clarifications that people might want to make or responding to questions that may come up from one or more of you. Sometimes the explanations may need clarification, so we'll get that clarification from, you know, from the specific individual building principal or or department head. We're also engaged, Tom and I, kind of concurrently in in some more research on these. Again, some of these are really purely placeholders. Some of them, for example, when you see an FTE, a full-time equivalent, for example, for adding an additional course, what we have done for for many years in our overall budget development is when we're budgeting for for a new position or a a part of a position, we use what?
Master Step Five.
A master Step Five salary, just again, as a placeholder. Sometimes when we hire somebody, we're securing somebody that that costs us less than that amount, sometimes over. It's tended to be over time, a pretty good kind of average salary to to put in there as a placeholder. So, you know, we may modify that as we go over the course of the next couple of months. The other thing that tends to happen is what I ask the administrators to do when they're submitting ideas for this list is I tell them if if it's a if it's a gotta-have item, it really shouldn't be on this list. This list isn't the things that we would say we're required by a student's IEP to provide a special service. That shouldn't be on this list. These are these are nice-to-haves, not gotta-haves. So sometimes, as we work through this list, one of the administrators would say, you know, the more I think about that, that that's really something I have to have. That's that's not an optional. Okay, that that comes off this list. Then we're going to put that into the into the budget document itself as we develop it, which we we haven't gotten to that point yet. And so so these items may may change a little bit over the course of the next couple of months. I do ask them to to try as best they're able not to be adding items to this. If it's a unless it's something that comes up totally out of the clear blue, then, okay, we'll put it in. But this this list ought to be ought to be, in theory, at staying the same or getting smaller. It shouldn't we shouldn't be growing this this list. And we try to we try to stick to that rule of them through the process. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, but that's kind of how it gets massaged over the next couple of months.
Any questions?
Diane? So let me just give you some initial thoughts maybe so that the principals are prepared to speak about the next week or the next meeting. You know, I think it's great that we're starting again so early with this, and it gives us opportunity to just sort of think about things and talk about them, which was very helpful to me last year. I think that we added, you know, electives to the high school last year, and we should we saw that it was effective in keeping kids more kids engaged in school and taking those electives. And I love that there is both social science and Project Lead the Way on this list because it appeals to different sets of kids. I'm wondering about our Gateway Technology teacher is currently teaching a one elective in the high school, and there's a point two request here for Project Lead the Way for another elective. And then there's a point two increase for Gateway Technology. If the high school and the middle school could just sort of coordinate what it is they're asking for, would that Gateway Technology teacher go back to teaching that point two gateway request, and then a new teacher would be assigned, the one the Project Lead the Way that we're currently offering? Plus a new project?
I'll give you a very specific answer.
Okay.
It depends. No, no, seriously, I mean, one thing it would depend on would be how the master schedule might shake out because, you know, one of these courses might have, you know, in the middle school might have to be backed up to when we'd have to have to offer a course in the high school. So that may dictate that another person. But I think I think it's safe to say that if if we got to the point in our budget process where we were able to and and wanted to add both of those things, I mean, the simple math is point two and a point two, we're talking about needing a 40 percent.
Right.
Technology teacher. Exactly whether that person would be slotted in which building in this, you know, in this our situation here, it's a little easier because it's the same building, and they can switch back and forth as they need to from year to year. Doing something in the elementary school, which is also on on this list, that's not something we're going to be easily probably not shifting somebody from here and running back and forth between the elementary school and the high school. But at the very least, we'd need to hire that much more teaching time.
So that was sort of where I was going with the question. If it's a point four really between the two of them, how realistic is it we're going to find someone for point four, which we've talked about the problems with part-time, especially if it's less than 50 percent of the time? Do we want to talk about what it would look like to be point six or point eight if if this is really a multi-year Project Lead the Way proposal? Because we've I mean, when we knew we were sort of coming to this point, we've maxed out the technology teacher we currently have to offer just one more elective is means a whole new teacher.
Well, the other thing we're looking I I mean, we could do that certainly. The other thing we're we're exploring is the possibility, especially especially at the high school level, of being able to use a a teacher who is certified in math or science to be able to to teach one of those advanced Project Lead the Way courses. That's not unusual, and Project Lead the Way suggests that that's a perfectly acceptable certification to see teach some of those advanced-level courses. So we would look at the possibility of people within our own staff to either pick that course up to fill out their schedule, or maybe pick it up as a sixth class, or maybe, you know, add this here and backfill it with more math teaching or it's it's a puzzle, and that's that's the way it's always going to be, especially in a small school like ours. But we're looking at multiple possibilities to to find the correct people to teach those courses depending on which way we're going to go. You know, if we decide to only add a point two FTE, probably impossible to find a technology teacher who is going to be available to come in here and teach one course. But could you could we find a math or a science teacher, perhaps, who had an interest? That may be more feasible. So we're looking at all the possibilities, and depends on what the what things are going to look like by the time we start to get towards the end of the budget process, and then we'll work from there.
I'll also note that, you know, many of these items have a nexus with the board committee, so that I'm sure many of us are familiar with some of the items because of board committees we serve on. But if those committees continue to sort of if there are questions or things that need to be flushed out additionally through committee, that's another mechanism by which the board sort of gets questions answered and feels fully informed. But are there any other questions right now about this list?
Joe, I'm hoping that for Chancellor, if one Brett's here next, he could talk a little bit about his vision for this request of a STEM teacher for a full-time thing, what that looks like at Chancellor, and where if he sees that that whole side of the building going.
Yeah. And I would just since you asked that question, I'll just, you know, soften the beach a little bit and and say that what those what we're looking at here, because currently, we have a a one position that is point five FTE math AIS, and the other half of that position is what we're currently calling a science coordinator. So part of the part of the plan, and I'll let Brett expand upon it in December, but part of the plan is to to morph that science coordinator into into a STEM teacher. So it's a the focus is somewhat different there. We already have the space in the lab for that, so so that's that's a good thing. And what the recommendation here is for a point five FTE. So what we would what we would wind up with would be, instead of a 1.0 half-math, half-science, we end up with a 1.5 half-math and full-time STEM. This point five FTE STEM teacher would actually combine with the point five FTE science coordinator to provide the resources of of an individual to be doing STEM full-time at the elementary school. Also, I'm not sure if any of you happen to run into it, but Project Lead the Way is just this year rolling out at elementary level. Project Lead the Way course, this is the first year, so maybe that's something we'd we'd look at down the road a couple of years after somebody else beta tests that program. And there's plenty that we could do kind of leading up to that. So I don't I don't I think we could have a robust program and kind of build towards going into the Project Lead the Way business in the elementary school, assuming that our teachers felt that that was an appropriate program for our students. I mean, we don't even know what the program entails right now, so that I would see that maybe maybe a year or two out, and that would if it's anything like the middle school and the high school programs, that would entail some some capital outlay in terms of equipment and whatnot and software training. We know from our experience with the middle school and the high school that that's that's a somewhat more expensive program than doing a homegrown program first. But it's something we we want to look at and find more out about.
Any other questions? Diane?
Sure. I don't know if you can talk about the guidance council a little bit, and their kids going down.
Yeah, the actually, the the second and third things on that list are linked. It would and again, this is a proposal at this point. Our our high school counselors and Dr. Davenport made a visit to Somers High School a couple of weeks ago, initially to look at the Naviance software. And I think they they came back with the idea that there is a lot of potential in using that software to help our students nine through 12 in the kind of the process of preparing to apply to college. But I think the other thing they came away from that is that they're going to need more more human resource support to use a program like that, you know, across grades nine through 12, thus the the request for additional staffing. I mean, Dr. Davenport could address that more specifically since he's the one who who went on the field trip. But that's that's where that's coming from, not necessarily more kids or or even the same number of kids, but bringing that new software online, should we decide to go down that road, is more than likely going to need more support in the guidance office for that. But specific questions on that, I'd ask you to say that for Dr. Davenport, I'll give him a heads up that that'll be a question that that you'd like answered.
And will the after-school monitor, BMS, or don't we have that?
We do have it currently. But the thing that does happen is she is walking the perimeter and around, it leaves everything else. You know, so it was more to get somebody permanently in the lobby while someone else is going around the athletic fields, making sure everything is in its place in the after-school. Plus, this would, I think, also would be looking to extend the time in the lobby, because I think she is through at 5 o'clock.
I think so.
So I think this would extend it to like 6 o'clock or so, just a little bit more to get all the kids out after, you know, after, you know, basketball.
Yeah, we had that on our list last year, and I think as part of the discussion, you know, there were some questions raised about whether that that is necessarily a good expenditure of funds, given the numbers of kids that are that are in the building after school. I mean, earlier on, there are a lot of them, and then, you know, later on, there are a few of them. Would it be helpful to have somebody at the front door controlling access to the building? There were some questions raised last year when this was on the list about, you know, like during sports seasons, and there's kids coming in all sorts of doors because they're on three sides of the building in and out. And is it even something that we could that we could control as well as we'd like to? So it's it's still a question mark. Our administrators didn't want to take it off and and abandon the concept, but they like to keep pursuing that to see if there's a way to to maybe help with that. So that's that's more in the lightbulb stage at this at this point.
Diane?
Tom, at the, sorry, the accounting software, in terms of our past conversations about the accounting updates needed in the business office, is that more a need, or is that in addition to the needs that we've talked about?
Well, what has happened is Informatic, our current accounting software, has been bought out by what's called the Harris Group, which is Wincap, as the rest of New York State knows it by. So they have told us that, you know, we can keep the software that we currently use for as long as we want to. I don't know if that's the case, because it's not going to go on for years and years. So at some point in the in the in the in the future years, we're going to have to upgrade our accounting system. We looked at a couple of products last year, much more complicated than what we need. Our understanding is is that there is a software company that is coming up with a dumbing-down product, because the products that that they're giving to us are places that have $200 million budgets and 2,000 employees, and it's just so complex. It takes us so much longer to get things done. So the idea is, we like what we got so far and what we're using, but within the next couple of years, we're going to have to migrate to something else. And we're hoping that that new version will come out and will meet our needs.
And right now, it's it's not a gotta-have, because we can continue to use what we have currently. But we know for any number of reasons, we want to migrate to something different. So it's again, it's there as a placeholder. We've had this discussion, and we're not sure that, I mean, we've even tagged it to say possible 2015-16 purchase. So it's again, it's there as a placeholder to give the board a good heads up that this is coming down the the pike sooner rather than later, likely not for the coming year, but we want to make sure everybody's aware of the of our thinking. And similarly, with some of the items under facilities as well. I mean, these aren't things that necessarily have to happen this year or have to happen at all, but we think they're things we're going to want to do sooner rather than later, maybe some in this coming year's budget, maybe not. But again, it's as much a heads up as as anything else, I think.
Great. Any other questions about this? All right, Joel, thanks for this first presentation. I think it is has proven to be useful as we develop our budget so that these kinds of creative thinking or needs that we know might come up in the future, you know, help us to evaluate the budget in a more creative way as we move on. So getting it out to us early is really helpful. All right, thank you. So we'll move on now to board committee reports. The first report is from the Finance Committee, and Diane Cantares, you did that?
Okay, so we covered a lot of ground on this meeting. We reviewed, DEHIC has a trust agreement that you see as an action item. It requires approval every five years. There are minimal changes this year. They include changing the number of people on the executive board, changing and how controversies are resolved, so that there's recourse if you don't like the resolution, changing in how amendments are approved, and removal of roundout Valley Central School District from the cooperative. Other than that, there's no other significant changes. Lisa had attended the Duchess County School Board Association, and they give an overview of DEHIC and how it's run. of DEHIC and how it's run, which was very helpful to hear because as new board members, we'd actually never get that lowdown on how it works. But it's run very responsibly. It's a cooperative for healthcare for school districts who want to participate, Dutchess County in general. They have minimal overhead of 6%, which is very low. They are continuing to use Empire Blue Cross Blue Shield as their catastrophic sort of insurance overhead.
Network.
Super. The trustees and officials are not compensated, and they put out RFPs frequently to ensure cost savings. And they do offer three different health plans to the districts that participate. Central Hudson is offering a lighting proposal that the committee will go into detail about. We reviewed the finances of it, and it makes sense, and our committee recommends that we approve this financially, on a financial basis, just to give a heads-up that the Buckley Middle School needs a new copier. And financial projections were reviewed as we start reviewing the budget process. And we'll go over this in more detail as we go through the budget in the following weeks. And we started reviewing the cafeteria, September reports. We are not making money yet.
We're not losing his money. At least they're going to the first month themselves, so.
And there's a plan in December and January to be able to present in more detail of the cost of meals, what meals we're serving. But we have made a lot of progress in the quality of food that we're serving, and more fresh vegetables, more fresh fruit, more local produce. Tom spent a lot of time researching where to buy food and what's selling at different school buildings, so there's been some progress this year. And we discussed some goals for the year from finance, in addition to just budget goals, really looking at long-term projections of everything, of our budget going forward, of enrollments going forward, of what that means for cost per student going forward, of town growth going forward, and then what that means to tax caps and to the bottom-line cost of running a school regardless of what the size is, because there is a bottom-line cost. And we expressed some interest in discussing these issues after we get a clear picture of where they're going with the town and village to better discuss growth in the town and where they see it going and how we can, you know, sort of make some visions together of ways to help each other, maybe try and get more families into Reinbeck. Just share some ideas in general.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that because we have this Reinbeck collaboration that has been going on for a while, which were regular meetings with the school and the town, the village, but it seems to have waned in recent years, although Joe was very much instrumental always in keeping it going. But with a new town supervisor taking office, I think January 1st, then, we talked about maybe trying to get that going again, or at least an initial meeting to talk over some of these ideas with the new town administration, invite the village as well. Any questions for finance? Okay, we move on to the personnel committee meeting. I did those minutes, so I'll just share them. We talked about chancellor staffing reconfigurations, some of which are reflected in our action items tonight. Joe explained rules regarding preferred eligibility and seniority and tenure timelines and the intersection between all three of those. We talked, continue to talk about our hiring practices and the concern about, you know, adequate expectations from hiring committees to principals, superintendent to the board, and whether we're all communicating seamlessly on what the expectations are in that process. So in an effort to move forward a little bit on that, it was suggested that Joe develop a regulation to accompany policy 9240, which explicates the qualities we look for in new hires. And a regulation, for those of you who are new to the board, accompany policies, there's administrative procedures that are developed by the superintendent. They are not approved by the board, but they, if you go through the policies online, some of them will have like, you know, it would be 9240R. So it's our policy with a regulation that explains how it's going to be carried out. So we thought maybe to give Joe an opportunity to focus a little bit on the hiring letters so that when we receive hiring, recommendation letters from principals, we are sure that they contain the kind of information that we're looking for. So that's our approach at this time. And we discussed a little bit about preparing for contract negotiations, which we'll discuss further in executive session. Any questions? Okay, then we move on to our next committee report, which is facilities. And that was Deirdre.
So the facilities committee met with David Turnus, who's a representative of Lime Energy, a subsidiary of Central Hudson, about coming and retrofitting the external lights. And Tom, were you going to speak to that at all tonight? Or?
Well, I don't know if you want to do that now or at the?
Or maybe when you do your report later. So more to come, but the committee heard about the particulars of the cost savings that'd be available to the district and also importantly, how it would reduce our carbon footprint. So we'll hear about more of that later. We also reviewed the building condition surveys, which was last performed in the 2010-2011 school year. Our next review will take place in 2015, 2016. And Sheldon Teeter went over that with us, calling out particular areas that are also on his list, that he keeps of areas of concern, particularly eventually replacing the roof at the high school and middle school, window caulking at CLS, improved ventilation or air exchange at the middle school, and asbestos floor tile replacement. As you all recall, we have already had a small repair that took place early this year, so the question of having some kind of sequenced replacement of those tiles over time. So Sheldon will come back to us with a list of prioritized facilities concerns, and this is part of our overall goal for the year, to continue to work with that document, the building condition surveys, to prioritize current and future needs.
Great. Diane?
I was just wondering if the committee would consider looking into some grants that could be available for some of the long-term capital replacement projects, like especially ones that are energy-efficient ones. There might be grants out there, caulking and asbestos repair. You could make an agreement for health benefits. Although, just to be clear, there are no broken asbestos.
No, 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 it's very clear. It's all intact, exactly.
There is no health risk.
Thank you.
We're trying to be proactive about that.
Exactly, exactly.
And, you know, Paul had always brought up this sort of project that never got done, replacing windows from a long time ago, but, you know, perhaps, I'm sure they're not energy-efficient. If there is a grant out there, they could.
Thank you. That, and I'll just say, as a member of the facilities committee, that this does intersect with the item on potential programs and services, which is to create a capital fund, because Sheldon does anticipate that the roof in the middle school at some point within the next two to three to five years maybe at most will need to be replaced. So one way of approaching that is to begin to create a fund. You still need voter approval to expend those funds, but it's sort of like saving for that eventuality is one way to look at it. And I'll also just highlight that the facilities committee also supports the lighting project offered by Central Hudson. So. Any other questions for the facilities? Okay, great, thank you, Deirdre. I think that's it for board.
We had a curriculum meeting, I think, on Friday. I have, no, I think there didn't, didn't somebody?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I just, I didn't get them in the packet, so we've tried to have the reports when we have the minutes, so they'll be in the December 10th packet. We'll do those along with whichever ones, other meetings we had before December 10th.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we're finished with reports and discussion. We'll move on to the comments section of agenda. Good news? Does anyone have any good news? Lisa?
I just wanted to say how pleased I was with the turnout and the discussions of the coffee with the board sessions. I thought they were excellent. And I'm looking forward to continuing this process and finding the meetings that we have scheduled in the next week for the spring. It's very valuable.
Would it be possible to speak up?
Okay. So the board had, there were a couple of sessions recently that we publicized for our community to have coffee with board members, just as an informal communication tool. And that was a week ago, I think, and a morning session and an evening session. And we had some, while the turnout was small, the discussion was robust, I think, at both meetings, and I think suggests a lot of potential for growth. I think, you know, one thing I learned from talking, aside from the specific issues people raised, was just that an informal way to talk about issues is a nice opportunity, that this meeting can feel too formal, or, you know, if you email someone, you just want a discussion. And so I think that that, I want to thank the communications committee for spearheading that because I think that it has a lot of potential. So that was a nice event. And I know there was discussion about the communications committee actually emailing thanks to those people who participated. So I think that seems like a nice idea. Any other good news?
Kudos to the Reinbeck Science Foundation, because they grew. They hosted the Discovery Festival again last weekend, and it was remarkable. We were all trying to run around and figure out how many kids were there, but there were lots of kids running around with kites and figuring out all sorts of wonderful ways of making special effects makeup and the science behind all of that. It's a really wonderful event that the district allows them to use the building for because the kids just can't get enough. They really are enthusiastic and excited, and the presenters all love being in the building and working with the kids. It's a nice way for our community to interact with children in a way that they don't normally. So it was great.
And Joe, you?
Yeah, I would piggyback on that, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there. I had a conflict this past Thursday, but our high school gay-straight alliance club partnered with our middle school student council to hold a talent show, and I've heard nothing but positive buzz about that since it occurred. And I really, after the fact, I feel badly that I had to miss it because of things that I heard in terms of the quality of the acts and the young man who won the competition happens to be a sixth grader, who I found out after the fact, decided about seven weeks ago that he wanted to be in the talent show and actually learned ventriloquism and did a ventriloquist act that apparently was so funny that people were literally falling on the floor. And it so happens that this young boy is actually my neighbor, and of course, he, you know, it really made his fall because he won and beat out a number of high school acts and was very good. I mean, it wasn't a sympathy vote at all. It was like, this kid was fantastic, so. And I think it was especially nice that a high school club and a middle school club partnered, and there were middle school acts, high school acts, and a really very positive thing for our school. So it was good to hear. I'd pass that along to you.
Thank you. And I'll share, I think it was this past weekend, there were students in our music department in our high school who participated in the New York State High School Music Association, NISMA. I don't know if they're really called competitions exactly right, they're more.
The aerial stations.
And I think, you know, a couple of members of our high school students in our high school distinguish themselves, and I think that's always fantastic that we have students who excel in music. And I think, as I read in the high school newsletter that just came today, a number of them are moving on to other statewide venues. So I think just congratulations to our music department as always. Any other good news items?
Just following up on the idea of the talent show, bringing together students from the middle school and the high school. It's the end of the fall sports season, obviously, we're into the winter sports season, and I think many of those sports are now having their sort of dinners, their banquets. And again, I think it's a fantastic aspect of the sports program in this district that you have, you know, athletes from modified JV to the varsity level all sit down together and celebrate the accomplishments of the teams, as just happened with the soccer banquet earlier this week. So it's really wonderful to see all those players together, learning from each other. It's a special thing about our district.
Very good, true. Thank you. Well, good to hear a lot of good news the past couple of weeks. Thanks, everybody. We'll move on now to old business. Do we have any items for old business?
I don't.
No? Anyone? Diane?
Joe, I have a question for you. Maybe I didn't understand it correctly the first time, but in the race to the top, people, what I've been reading recently is a little bit different than what I originally understood. If districts refuse the race to the top money, not only do they not have to buy the dashboard, and they do have to submit the data, but what I've been reading is that student evaluations are not being generated on their students. Is that true, or are they just not receiving them?
I'm not sure exactly what that means.
So like, I think that, what I think it means is, we have a dashboard and we get data generated per student about all of our students here. If you refuse the race to the top money, is the state, and I know the state's still collecting the data from the district, are they not putting it together to generate whatever form it is about each student? And to me, it seems like a small difference, but sort of significant. Are there student-generated reports sitting at the state level that just aren't coming back to those districts that are refusing the money, or are they actually not generating forms around each individual student?
I don't know the answer to your question. I'd want to.
But do you understand what I'm saying?
I think so. I'd want to ask Marvin to respond to that.
I think it's sort of interesting for us to know whether, you know, if there's forms up there where there's, that are generating data about each one of our students, we may as well have them. But if they're not actually out there for future use, it might be something that, you know, really is worth discussing, just knowing more about.
Right. I mean, I guess the way I've been conceptualizing it, Joe, helping with this, is that it's not exactly like forms, but rather the data dashboard is just like, you know, kind of a method to organize different data points. So the different dashboards are data in different formats, so how you are best to use that data. So it's not, I think, so I guess my question from what you're saying would be, are there, is there data you wouldn't get back because you don't have a dashboard?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I understand that question.
Not exactly like a form, but rather, right?
Yeah, my understanding is that you, like, a principal would be able to query the data on a certain data point for all the students in his or her school. Or a teacher would be able to query, let's say, you know, an eighth-grade English teacher would be able to query the last X number of years of state ELA test scores for his or her students in order to make some instructional decisions for an individual student or that group of students. Or, you know, coming down to an individual level, a parent would be able to go on to this data dashboard and look at his own or her own student's progress or, you know, data on, you know, reading scores for the last X number of years. So as a parent, he or she might be able to make some decisions about his own student's education. I think that's what they're talking about, having data that you can access and at certain levels that you could actually query more, you know, the teacher level or the building level or the district level, as opposed level, or the district level, as opposed to like a profile for a student, or, you know, that's what I think of when I think of a form, like a, you know, a student, and you could put together a student profile, but I'm not sure that it resides on that data dashboard in that form. But I'm not certain about that, so I wouldn't want anybody to take that to the bank, I'd want to get Marvin to weigh in on that, he's gone to dozens of these meetings in Albany, so he has a much better handle on that of anybody in our district, to be honest.
So, and your question then is like, how useful will having or not having such a-
No, I think that's a separate question, and I think we should evaluate it year to year, too, if it's of no use to us, that's important for everyone to know. If it's there in a way that, you know, I guess, I don't know where this is all going and where it's going to play out. If our university is going to be able to generate information about our students because we've collected it over years, it's not, that's sort of paranoid thinking, you could say, but is that a possibility, and we should keep our eyes on if that's going that way? Or, you know, are those, are those schools who opted out, is it impossible to generate that information on their students because they opted out? I sort of think that if we're all submitting data to the state, they're organizing in some way to keep it, so it doesn't matter whether we're opting in or opting out.
Right.
If it's there, it's there, so it doesn't matter, but I just kind of want to know that.
I think that's, that's the assumption we've been making, which is, again, not to recycle this whole conversation that we've had the last couple of meetings, but, you know, if we, if we thought that there was a purpose other than to make a statement to not participate, it, there may have been a rationale for doing that. I think the school districts that have opted out acknowledge that the state is going to keep pulling that data out and organize it and do with it whatever they please, and that opting out isn't going to prevent that from happening. And then, of course, that conversation warps into that whole conversation about data security and in boom, and, you know, again, that's, that's a 45-minute rehash right there, but I think we're proceeding under the assumption that we have some financial obligations tied to Race to the Top, so even though it's not a huge amount of money, it's money that we don't see a benefit in throwing that money away, other than to make a statement, and we've had discussions about there being more constructive ways to make a statement, like lobbying our region, sending letters to them, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's the road I'm inclined to go down at this point, at least until we get more information that, that would suggest otherwise, but right now, that's where we're, that's where we're headed. So stay tuned, because every time you open your eclipse, there's something else related to that, so.
And on that note, Joe, you've provided with us some information from our legal counsel about the fact that the state is not providing to school districts the confidentiality requirements that they're including in their contract with the vendors, the data dashboard vendors. So they have not done it, even though we are supposed to have chosen a vendor by November 15th, so I was happy to see that our legal counsel is concerned about our obligation to FERPA, the federal legislation protecting student data and student rights in that regard, and data security. So I'm just wondering if you could follow up at all, as far as this memo, we were still waiting for the verification from SED about data security and FERPA protections that have been, they had promised to be part of those agreements with those vendors, have you heard anything since then?
Not, and this memo only came to us on the 19th, so I think this memo is only like a week old, and, no, we haven't heard anything since.
Because I would like to see us just follow up on, you know, I think what, what our legal counsel is wisely trying to highlight is that we have our own obligation to our students by law, and we need to be assured by SED that they're not being compromised by a contract that we actually have to choose one of the vendors, but we are not party to the contract between SED and those vendors. So I'm, it was a, it's a focus that I'm glad to see Sean Perelson is bringing to our attention, I'd like to see us follow up on that.
Yep.
So we're not exposing ourselves to, you know, from, forget, you know, there's the larger ethical issue involved and legal issue, or then what kind of exposure without knowing what those agreements are.
Yeah, and I would say that knowing the client base of that particular legal firm, and that they do represent a number of school districts, not only in this part of the state, but also in Westchester and Long Island, that, that there's a lot of pressure out there to get that information, because that's kind of a key point in this whole debate over how secure is this data going to be. So I'm sure we're not the only school district, and probably some that have been more rabid about it in demanding that their legal counsel show these documents, so I don't think this is something that's-
Right.
-going to just dry up and blow away. I mean, I think people are going to be pounding the table until they get that document, and if the document's not forthcoming, that will be the newest outrage for people to be upset about, and rightfully so. I mean, if there's an obligation that is also our obligation, they would at least let us in on what they're signing off for on our behalf.
Right.
So we'll let you know when we, when we hear anything new on that.
Any other items under old business? Okay, great, thank you. We'll move on now to our second opportunity for public comment, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on now to other, are there any items under other? Anyone who knows?
No.
Okay.
You know, I'll bring up other, although maybe it should have been old business.
Sorry, too late.
Sometimes it falls in the loop. So Laura was kind enough to share her thoughts on what she learned at the meetings that she went to, and, you know, this idea of observational, observational evaluations, for lack of a better word, for teachers for the sake of just feedback and improvement other than evaluations for documentation purposes, is something that Deirdre brought up earlier, and Rick Campbell is sort of doing in our school in some ways, and Laura, you know, brought it up in the context of the meetings that she went to, and it just sort of keeps coming back, and it seems like a really great concept. There doesn't seem to be any downside to it, and I'd like to hear more feedback from our administrators, so, you know, what they think about this, you know, what they'd like to see more of this, is this something that we should be budgeting for, should be encouraging, is this, you know, what is the potential for this? Because it seems like, just, it seems like a no-brainer, like it would benefit everyone, and there's no downside, and it's not for punitive purposes, and it's not for the APR, it's just simply to help people improve their practice. And even in my profession, we have sort of a safe haven where we can discuss practice, and it helps us improve the way we work.
Yeah, we'll have to do a more granular discussion of that, you know, using the, you know, that document that you emailed us this, this past week with the administrative team and get some feedback from them, so we'll be undertaking that.
That's a great.
I think, is the term instructional coaching, is that the term?
That is the term, yes.
Okay. Okay, any other items under other? All right, moving on now to our action items. Does any, well, we can just have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent item.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Second moved by Lisa. Any other discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution consenting to the adoption of a revised trust agreement by the Board of Trustees of the Dutchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium, whereas the Rhinebeck Central School District is a participant in the Dutchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium, DHIQ, and whereas the Board of Trustees of DHIQ has approved a revised trust agreement to clarify certain provisions in the original trust agreement and ensure the continued effective operation of DHIQ, now therefore, due deliberation having been given, be it resolved, that the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby agrees to the amendment of the DHIQ agreement as proposed by DHIQ's Board of Trustees, and that the Board of Education President be and is hereby authorized to execute the attached amended trust agreement effective as of January 1, 2014, and that a certified copy of this resolution be prepared and sent along with the executed trust agreement to DHIQ at the following address, Dutchess Bosse's 5 Bosse's Road, Pitsy, New York, 12601, Attention Mary Grunau.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions or discussion about this? Diane, it was discussed in finance, I think, yeah, so. All right, seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution, whereas the school district has received a proposal from Central Hudson Gas and Electric Corporation for participation, the Chegg Commercial Energy Efficiency Program using electrical contractor Lime Energy, a sole source provider, to retrofit the district's outdoor wall packs and parking lot lighting fixtures at Rhinebeck High, Berkeley Middle School, and Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, the school, and whereas the Board of Education wishes to adopt this proposal and avail itself of the potential cost savings as a result of the retrofitting of the lighting fixtures at the school, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accept such proposal for the retrofitting of the lighting fixtures at Rhinebeck High, Berkeley Middle School, and Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, authorizes the Board President to execute the documents in connection with this program, and directs the purchasing agent to order the necessary materials and equipment in order to enable the school district to install such materials and equipment to complete the retrofitting by June 3, 2014.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Questions, or people want more discussion from explanations?
Just a quick question, did Central Hudson come to us with this program, or did we go seeking?
No, they came to us. They did this a couple of years ago, we did some interior lighting that was the Chancellor Gymnasium, we retrofitted them with LED lighting a couple of years ago. They've done this program, I know at Pine Plains, I know they've reached out to a couple of their school districts, but they reached out to us. They initially wanted to reach out to more of the private businesses and corporations, and, because what Central Hudson's trying to do is reduce the usage across the board, I think they're, they're under some obligation to get the usage across their entire area down by 15%. And they found that the private corporations are very tentative about going out there, because in this case, this payback is about, remember, it was a little over four years. And there's a lot of businesses that aren't willing to make that, that jump, whereas, you know, we're going to be here, I want to say 100 years from now, but we'll still be the Rhinebeck Central School District, there'll be a school here, and our property, so, you know, we look at it as, this is going to save us money over the long run, and will provide a lot of us, first, reducing our energy usage, payback is about four years, and it does help the environment also at the same time. It also does another thing for us, because our lighting fixtures are getting older, they're getting hard to find some replacement parts for them, this would give us the opportunity to put new ones in there, and hopefully, our maintenance staff won't have to touch these for 15, 20 years, don't know, I mean, it is technology, they're saying 10 to 20 years, so hopefully we'll get to 15 years before we even have to begin replacing the LEDs, but, and by that time, we're thinking, and Sheldon's thinking, is the cost of the LED lights, which is expensive right now, in 10, 15 years, it's going to be much, much cheaper. So to him, it makes a lot of sense, it's a capital outlay of about, they've gone back and they're redoing the numbers, and they're finding more fixtures, actually, the payback period's come down, actually, I think it's under four years now, but they found more things to replace, so, if I remember correctly, right now, the estimate's between, I think it's about $37,000, but that payback is, it's less now, it's under four years. So it's, like I said, we worked, not with Lime Energy, I can't remember the name of the outfit, who worked with Central Hudson last time, I don't remember their name, but Central Hudson oversees them to make sure everything's done properly, and it says it would be done by the end of the school year, they indicated it has to be done way, 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 as soon as they can, and get the things, they'll put them right up. There's a slight cost saving if we're able to sign this contract before the end of the year, as opposed to- Before the end of this calendar year. Roll it into the next program. So, and we get a big discount if we pay it all upfront, we get like a- As opposed to financing it. As opposed to financing it over two years, we pay it upfront, we save 11% automatically, so that was, that's a nice deal for us, too. So, but it, in the information here, I think one of the things, and this is to replace all outside lighting, and replace it all with new- Parking lot lighting and every external light on both buildings. Right, and, you know, if I remember correctly, the latest one I've seen, it's the equivalent to taking 11 cars off the road, over five houses, and so there's, you know, all that good stuff that goes into the environmental impact, plus, you know, the other thing, too, Sheldon's looking at, they're in the process right now of figuring out how they're going to replace a lot of things that are, they know are going, anywhere from binding light, certain type of bulbs are becoming difficult, and even getting up there is a little difficult, too, because we do have a scissors lift, but it's not something you want to go out there in the middle of December to use a scissors lift, so he would appreciate, you know, the board's approval for this on many, many different levels.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like, you know, in all the committees, the fact that it's an opportunity to take advantage of Central Hudson's sort of payback to, and to also reduce our carbon footprint while over time reducing our costs, along with our energy output, so while it's, LED lighting is still, you know, a newer technology, it is, does seem to be the direction that things are going in, so it seems like we're a good opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions about this? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes, thank you, Tom. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to create the full-time position of math AIS teacher assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, which position is included in the budget for the 2013-14 school year effective December 9, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions?
I just want to point out to the community that, you know, I think these are really a great fit for both of these teachers, there's been a lot of change in the counselor, and I think this is-
So that'll be the next motion.
I'm sorry.
That'll fill that, that's okay. They are linked, I'll get back to you. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. Now they have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to acknowledge, one, the reassignment of Kathy Barpulis from grade five teacher to math AIS teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective December 9, 2013, and two, that William Morrissey currently serving as a special education teacher is being recalled from the preferred eligible list for the elementary tenure area to the position of elementary teacher effective December 9, 2013, Mr. Morrissey will assume the grade five vacancy created by the reassignment of Ms. Barpulis.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa.
Comments?
As I was saying, I think actually it's a great fit for both of these teachers, and I wish them a lot of success in their new positions, and I just want our community to really know how fortunate we are to have Ms. Barpulis in our district, she's such an extensive background in math and teaching math, and it's exciting to me that she's taking over as a full-time AIS teacher, and I think that we're going to see a lot of really great outcomes, I look forward to seeing her.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Bill Corney as head basketball chaperone to the 2013-14 winter sports season as stipend of $449 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions?
Do we have chaperones for all of our sports teams?
Do we have chaperones for all of our sports teams?
Typically not. The ones that draw the largest crowds.
Indoors.
Indoor crowds, which is boys' basketball.
Okay, so this isn't a chaperone of the children, it's sort of a chaperone of the event?
No, it's a chaperone of the spectators. As it were.
Visiting spectators.
You should see me at a basketball game.
We have one aside just to Ms. Burns.
Thank you.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve additional coaches, advisors for the 2013-14 school year in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. Boys' basketball modified Steve Boucher, $2,456, and girls' basketball modified Scott Stiversen, $2,456.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve additional mentors for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to appoint 2013-14 BMS after-school program instructors?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve the revised 2013-14 school tax bills totaling $766.22 in reduction adjustments and to make the appropriate refund to the property owner if required?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. There's a revision at your place, because there's a error in the name on the first page in our board package. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to accept a donation in the amount, in the amount of $2,500 from Mr. Douglas Itel, father of retiring teacher Linda Mortensen, as stipulated in the attached letter and memo?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any comments?
I'd just like to say this is the nicest donation I remember, you know, this father is, clearly loves his daughter and wants everybody to remember the contribution she's made to this school. I think it's really, really nice.
It is, it's fantastic, really, in many ways, so we very much appreciate it, yes, and we'll be sure to thank him for that. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve the selection of Big Ideas Math, Green, 2014, Big Ideas Learning LLC, Erie, Pennsylvania, distributed by Houghton Mifflin Harcourt, as the textbook for the grade six mathematics course?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve the shelter agreement with the American Red Cross for use of the school facilities in the event of emergency?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools?
We're gonna withdraw that, we don't have anything for 614.
Okay, so 6.14 is withdrawn. 6.15, may I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Faith, how do you?
Kenny.
Kenny, as a long-term substitute in the position of English teacher at Rhinebeck High School at the pleasure of the Board effective honor about December 12, 2013 through June 26, 2014, at the salary of Step 1 BA, $51,155 prorated in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Stephanie Baird, English teacher at Rhinebeck High School.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions, Lisa?
I would like to make a motion to table this for further discussion in executive session.
Okay, give a second to that motion. Diane Lyon, seconded the motion. All those in favor of tabling the motion? That's unanimous, that motion is tabled. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Lisa Cole as a long-term substitute in the position of social worker at Bulkeley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School, at the pleasure of the Board effective honor about December 3, 2013 through January 13, 2014, at the salary of Step 1 MA plus 30 plus 30, $61,960 prorated in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Megan Rodea, a social worker both at Middle School, Rhinebeck High School.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to establish the position of Director of Technology and Communication, and to approve the appointment of Stephen Jensen to said tenure position, with a three-year probationary period effective December 2, 2013, with an annual 12-month salary of $118,000 prorated, including benefits as described in the Rhinebeck Administrators Association Agreement.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? I just, it sounds like it was a terrific process going through this, and I'm delighted just that this is a position we've talked about for a while, so it's sort of exciting to actually see the process from going through an audit of our technology program and those discussions with parents and community members and resulting in this, and the hiring process was involved, community members as well, to, that you oversaw, Joe, and to see it come to fruition here is satisfying, so.
I agree.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May, I have a motion now to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular person and the employment history of a particular corporation, and the discussion of contract associations with the Rhinebeck Teachers Association.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, we now move into executive session.